Start the regular session of Perry City Council meeting. Appears we don't have a representative from the church here today. Would anyone like to volunteer to say a prayer? Say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Devin, would you please take your oath?
Yes. Ted Conner?
Here.
Chad Fuller?
Here.
Mindy Galvaby here. Larry Lambert. Bob Porter?
Here.
Steve Wallace?
Here.
Mayor Sue Hammond is not available tonight. All is accounted for except Larry Lambert.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that the agenda be adopted as printed.
Moved by Chad, seconded by Bob, that the agenda be adopted as printed. You take your oath.
It can be any discussion and then followed with...
Okay. Any discussion? No discussion?
In favor, yes.
Hi.
Hi.
All opposed? Motion is carried. So it's time for reading and approval of the minutes?
I move that we suspend the rules with the reading and approve the minutes from the February 16th, 2023 regular meeting.
Moved by Mike and seconded by Mindy that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the February 16th, 2023 regular meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There's our invocation.
Oh!
Sorry, I don't like...
Do you want to do that then? So we didn't come into that, or how do you want to handle that?
Yeah, that gives correct a little bit of idea here. Would you still share our invocation? Thank you.
I lost track of time. So this is...
Thank you.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and for this opportunity to... For this council to come together and to provide leadership and direction for this city. We thank you, Father, for what they are doing tonight, Lord. We ask that your guidance and your direction would be upon them. We pray that you would lead them and that you would bless the city and all the aspects of the city. We pray, Father, that this would be a place where people would flourish and that your grace and peace would be upon them. Now we just give your ask, your blessing upon this meeting, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Devin.
I will be raised. Okay.
At this time, we were supposed to have a report from the Local Officers' Conversation Commission. Our member is not here at this time, so we reserve this space for... Some time for him if he does show up. So we have comments from the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak before council? All right, communications. Devin, are there any communications?
I just have one communication. There was an email from the city attorney that came in late this afternoon. You should have a copy of it. I just want to make sure you all have a copy of it. And also, no, that's it. That's all I got.
And the mayor's copy. She has... There has been no inquiries regarding the land that the city has for sale at this time. Mayor and department head reports. Who has to jump up first? They'll knock each other over. Thank you, Devin.
Good evening, all. Just got some few items to talk to you all about. Last time I was here, the mid-month meeting, we talked about going up for bids for trash. I drafted, along with the help of Devin and Megan, an RFP request for proposal, and we got that posted on the website, and we let people know that it's out there if they want to bid for our trash services. We're accepting those until the middle of the month, pretty much. So hopefully we get some good proposals, and we'll look at that when it's time to do so. If any of you wish to read what we have out there, it's available on the city website. I was going to print copies for you all, but it's a few pages long, and I had to figure everyone needed that in front of them. So if you want to look at it, it's available. Been working with the department heads on the city budget. I feel like, you know, it's my first time, so everyone's taking it easy on me. I feel like we've made some ground on our first draft. I'm pretty happy with how that's going. We had to order chemicals for the treatment of the lagoons when we do our spring discharge. We had to get that in before the frost laws came on. Trucks pretty heavy when it comes in, so we were trying to work that with... Be compliant with the laws on the roads. So we'll do our spring discharge this month in March. So that'll be coming up real soon, within a week or two. Some things we're looking at that the state is requesting that we do as far as planning and long-term goals. The city needs to update its water reliability study. It's a state requirement. We need a capital improvement plan, which is part of that. And then we're going to look at an asset management plan. We're going to put those items in the budget based on cost. Like I said, they are state requirements, so we're looking to do all of those plans at the same time because they kind of overlap and coincide together. So just giving you guys a heads up on that. The DVW crew are still doing our winter maintenance on equipment. And just so you all know, we've put the '06 Ford F-350 dump truck that we've used for quite a few years. It's up for auction with Sheridan Auctions. It's become problematic, having some breakdown issues and mechanical issues. So we got her all fixed up, looking good, and we're going to send her on its way. When that... That's the dump truck that they purchased last year was to replace the '06, so it's time for that to go also. Is there any questions for me at this time?
Thanks, Devin.
Hello, everybody. Kevin stole my thunder. We started working on the budget this week. It's going well. We had our department head meeting Wednesday. We'll meet with the mayor next week and hope I'm not overstepping, but I believe the mayor plans on a council work group April 6th before the council meeting. So it'd be an evening meeting, I believe 5:30 is our tentative plan to go over the budget for the first time with the council. Tax collection ended February 28th. I am working on closing the books with the county, and so everything... Taxpayers can no longer pay here at the city. I'm closing the books on our end, and everything will be to the county by the end of next week so that any unpaid taxes can be paid there. That's all I have. Any questions? Anything else?
Thank you very much, Megan. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Real brief report for you folks. I've been working with Devin on IT bids. That actually has taken a bit of time, but I'm happy with where we're at with all of that. As Kevin and Megan have mentioned, I mean, we all have been working on the budget, so we've made good progress on that, in my opinion. Was at the chief's conference at the beginning of February and came around... Came away with a lot of good information and some ideas on how we're going to move forward with a couple of projects. So glad to be there and partake in that. And this crazy siren project that we've been kicking the can down the road for about four years now. Last I spoke to you folks, we could not utilize our tower here in the city. The county has found a 911 radio tower that we can utilize for that, and it'll fulfill the same needs as ours, except without that ridiculous monthly cost that American Tower wanted to charge the county. So we're moving forward with that, and the only reason I bring that up to you folks is because our current sirens would need an upgrade to communicate back and forth with that new system that the county implements and puts in place. So at this point, my understanding is we're going to move forward from the county's perspective with the project, but any siren that's currently in place may have to upgrade. I think most all probably have to upgrade on the technology side so that they can send and transmit... I'm sorry, transmit and receive the signal that's going to go on this 911 tower so that they can be automatically activated during any kind of emergency, typically a tornado, but any... Do we have a ballpark for your own cost? At this point, I've been seeing numbers anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000. I think ours would probably be somewhere around eight. I don't know if that's because we have two, but I know that the one we have is probably one of the newer towers and sirens that's in the county. But as far as this system goes, we're going to need that much of an upgrade. But that... I'm kind of partaking in that information. I'm not really spearheading any of that, but I was on the original committee at the county level four years ago. I mean, it's been a while, so I'm glad to see that we're moving forward at least because I kind of felt like once our tower plans fell apart, that we really hadn't proceeded or moved forward. But we did find where we can put this little transmitter on, and it literally is a little transmitter, a little stick pole that transmit the signal. But anyway, we'll make do with what we can, and I'm glad to see we're moving forward. Any questions for me? All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanted to report is the talk of conversation with Sessa about having to increase the amounts. I've finally been able to really draft out the timeframe that would take for the city to increase that. If everything would be perfect and it would be discussed at the March 16th meeting and council agreed to do the process of a new special assessment, it would be approved and done June 1st. What would... Could be hiccups. Your assessor's not available. Your attorney's not available to make sure that everything is perfect. And then you don't have quorum because you got to have those things still happening and you got to allow the public time and availability. But if no hiccups, it would be approved June 1st, and I believe the county would be okay. They don't like to get things in June. They prefer to get them the last week of May, but they get stuff from us because they're the ones that do our taxes. You know, they get it all set up and go through there. So I've given a copy to the mayor on all the details on how it runs, so if anybody is partaking or going to meetings and wants to know that whole process, I've given her a copy tonight. It's in her box, just to make it aware.
That's one of the things I'm probably just going to add to the agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
Anyways. When we get to that point, I'll...
Yep, perfect. That's all I have for you, because, yeah, they all said we're over.
Thank you, Devin. Time for presentation and approval of the bills.
Let's go to committees first.
You did it? Here it is.
Okay.
There we go.
Committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
I am. Personnel committee has been working on a plan to create a college tuition reimbursement for department heads, and it's not completed yet, but we're working on it. It will be coming to you. I don't think... It'll take very long, but it'll be coming to council to approve or disapprove.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
We had a Parks meeting on Tuesday, and we discussed the Sparks Grant, how we were denied for it, but we also talked about the library came in. It was Jamie and who?
Carol.
Carol came in. They brought to us its, what they call a... They're solar benches. And so that we were talking, discussing where like they would be most used. So it's got like a solar panel on the backside, and then there's a bench in front so you can plug in your phones or anything like that. And the library was covering the cost of those. So that was something Jamie is going to get a ballpark of what we discussed about on Tuesday and get back with me or Megan what the cost would be or how much they are and where we would put off the costs. I think that's about it.
No recommendation to approve the full village?
Oh, yes. Later... Sorry about that. Later in the agenda, the discussion, possibility of approving the Set Parks Village. We'll discuss that later on in the agenda.
Thank you, Chad. Now we'll do the presentation of bills and approval of bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Moved by Mike and seconded by Chad that we approve the bills as presented and the payments... Payment be authorized. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, we'll move down to old business. Possible...
Can we speak about that one?
Would you please?
So what I presented to you for a motion on this subject was to actually table indefinitely due to there is actual progress going with our attorney and liberty wellness. And so if you see your motion, that's just taking it off of your agenda permanently until you decide that you wanted to bring it back on. So if you are fine with that, you can go with that. Or there is the... You have the actual original resolution in your packet. It is up to you.
How old can the table on it? Does anybody want to keep hold of that?
I'm going to level table. Possible approval to obtain Miller Canfield for legal counsel indefinitely.
Second.
Who is the second? Moved by Mike and seconded by Bob that we table possible approval to obtain Miller Canfield for legal counsel indefinitely. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Signify by saying nay. Motion is carried. All right, discussion. Possible approval to Set Parks Fund Village for 2023.
This is what we discussed on Tuesday, was presenting this to the council to approve it. It was approved from the Parks Committee. I just need it to be either discussed or approved from the council to get it going or let it through.
What rate do you want to make it at?
It's 1.10. 1.10, sorry, for 20 years. I'm sorry.
You're only making it for this year, 0.1. Next year, you'll do it again.
Okay.
But you're right. It goes for 20 years.
Yep.
Because you could... We could go in through some bad times or something could happen, so council has the power to change it each year.
I move that we accept and adopt the following resolution. Whereas the electors for the city of Perry have passed the Parks Village proposed on the November 2022 ballot, and whereas the proposal approved by the electors allowed for levy of up to 0.1 mil for 20 years for the costs and expenses related to maintaining and improving the city parks for the city of Perry. Now therefore be it resolved that to finance the expected costs and improvements of the city parks as contemplated by the proposed village, the following village is authorized for its first year, 0.1 mils for the city park costs and expenses for 2023.
Moved by Mike and seconded by Bob that we adopt the resolution as just read. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion is carried. Move down the agenda to possible adoption of ordinance repealing number 378.
I move that the ordinance number 378, which appeals LOCC Section 280.07 and which is read at the February 2nd, 2023 council meeting, be adopted.
Moved by Chad, seconded by Mindy, that ordinance number 378, 378, which repeals the Local Officers' Conversation Commission, Section 280.07, and which was read at the February 2nd, 2023 council meeting, be adopted. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay? Move down to possible adoption of ordinance amendment number 374 regarding fireworks.
I move that ordinance number 374, which amends fireworks regulations and which was read at the February 2nd, 2023 council meeting, be adopted.
Moved by Mike and seconded by Mindy, the zoning ordinance amendment number 371. I've got that wrong. 374.
Did I mess it up? No, it's just...
374 is right order.
Here. There you go.
Be adopted. Any discussion or questions on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay? Motion is carried. Possible first reading of zoning ordinance amendment number 371 regarding driveways and
I think that zoning ordinance amendment number 371 referencing driveways and sidewalks and which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains...
You have to say that. I'm sorry, Mindy. If you need to...
The city of Perry zoning ordinance number 371, Section 3.34, below cited paragraph shall be inserted as follows. Section 3.34, driveways and sidewalks. No person shall construct or alter a driveway approach or sidewalk without first obtaining a zoning permit approved by the zoning administrator and driveway approach sidewalk permit approved by the superintendent of public works. A, driveway approaches. All driveway approaches between the curb and gutter and sidewalk shall be paved with either concrete or bituminous leveling or wearing horse. Bituminous pavement shall consist of a minimum of 110 pounds per square inch of MDOT 13A. Concrete driveway approaches for residential sections shall be a minimum of six inches thick and a minimum of nine inches thick for commercial approaches. The maximum grade on the driveway approaches shall be 14%. The width of the driveway curb cut shall conform to the standard DTL. One, all work in connection with the above-mentioned driveway approach is to be performed by the applicant. No other work such as extending, tilling, or filling of any ditch in front of the property will be permitted without special permission from the Department of Public Works Superintendent. The applicant will pay for all damages to the street on account of the driveway installation and shall save the city council, Department of Public Works Superintendent, and city of Perry harmless from all suits, claims, damages, and proceedings arising out of any improper installation of the driveway approach. B, sidewalks. Sidewalks must be installed from property line to property line. All sidewalks constructed must be a minimum four inch thick and minimum of six inch thick if being poured within a driveway or approach. All new sidewalk constructed must be a minimum of 60 inches wide. Replacement sidewalk sections must be the same as the existing adjoining sidewalk sections. If the replacement sidewalk does not directly connect to existing sidewalk, it must be a minimum of 60 inches wide. Sidewalk must comply with all design standards set forth by the city of Perry. Should placement of the concrete be necessary over near tree roots, the tree roots should be removed whenever possible. Chemical treatment of the tree roots is recommended when it can be done safely. Copper sulfate or other herbicides can be used to prohibit tree root growth without harming the tree. Walks shall be protected from pedestrian traffic for two days and vehicles for seven days. C, ADA sidewalk compliance requirements. Any new sidewalk that exists into an intersection must install a handicap sidewalk warning pad. Black cast iron or black composite is acceptable. Detectable warning plates. Follow ADA specifications and follow manufacturer's installation specifications to properly install detectable warning plates per site planned layout. Page... Pay special attention to be sure the concrete comes through all the holes in the plate to eliminate all cavities below the plate that could trap water. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from the date of publication.
Second.
Moved by Mindy, seconded by Chad, the zoning ordinance amendment number 371 regarding driveways and sidewalks, which was just read, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Motion is carried. Possible first reading of ordinance repeal number 372 regarding section 1020.01. I move that section 1020.01 ordinance number 372 be repealed, which reads as follows and placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. Do I have the ordinance somewhere? Devin, I'm sorry. Because I don't know what I'm repealing, I'm sorry.
It should say the city of Perry ordains any motion, do you have any questions?
The Perry city, I'm sorry, the city of Perry ordains Perry city code section 1020.01 is your best repeal. This repeal ordinance will be effective 30 days after publication.
Second.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Mike, that section 1020.01 ordinance number 372 be repealed and placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? Motion is carried. Possible first reading of ordinance amendment number 375 regarding sidewalks.
I move that we amend ordinance number 375 referencing sidewalks, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. The city of Perry ordains Perry city code section 1246.05 is amended as follows. 1246.05 sidewalks. Sidewalks are required on all newly developed lots and shall be built in accordance with zoning ordinance section 3.34. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from the date of publication.
Second.
Moved by Mike and seconded by Bob that we amend ordinance number 375 regarding sidewalks, which reads as follows, be placed on the next agenda for possible adoption. Perry city code section 1246.05 is amended as follows. Sidewalks are required on all newly developed lots and shall be built in accordance with zoning ordinance section 3.34. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That motion is carried. Possible. Last one?
For discussion.
Last one.
Yep.
Am I okay?
We just did that, we just did this 375.
We just did 375. Discuss the map for the 2023 Warras Blue Mary's Pride Award. Make sure everyone got in their packet. People follow the map?
So if you like how it was last year, we really don't have to change it. I can just change the year on it and you could go forward that way. It's totally up to you, so that's why I gave you last year's and I'm like happy.
I'm okay. I'm fine.
Okay. Do I have everybody's names fully told? Yep, it's all the same people, no problem. Okay, that was easy. Any questions on how this works? Everybody's comfortable that you're picking not only a resident, but you're also picking a business, right?
Yep.
Okay. If you want to coordinate with Megan and I both, we appreciate it. She'll be working on the website with the information that you get and then I'll just be recording for you guys.
New business, possible closed session to discuss attorney client communication. At this time, our attorney's not here, so we do not need to go into closed session.
All right, if I, if, yeah, just.
Possible approval of IT support proposal.
I asked Kyle to kind of explain. All I'm going to add to it is I did try to give you all in your drawers copies of all three proposals. And then Kyle and I interviewed all three of them and there are certain things that Kyle needs with the police department and so he can justify a little bit more on the recommendation that we're saying to you and then you can ask questions or make decisions.
Yep. So last year, about a year ago, we were tasked with getting bids just to double check prices, costs on IT services. And at the time, we actually were in a bit of a transition period with our current IT provider as far as the services they provided and some of us were less than thrilled with some of the outcomes with that. That being said, we went ahead this year with the annual contract company up and reached out to multiple companies and got three responses back, one of which was our current vendor and then two new ones. We did interview all three of them and I thought all three did more than adequate, a very good job in providing us the information. We did have a couple follow-up questions as to what they provided us and we got those answers and for the most part, I think they were to the expectations that we needed them to be. Our current vendor is IT Right. That is going to be transitioning to a company called VC3. They just, they bought into this larger company. I believe that they're probably a big asset to VC3, but their capacity to help us enlarged greatly when they went to this larger company. And that was some of our headaches, them not having what they needed at the time with this transition as far as employees to help us. But regardless of that, I think they're coming out of that from what I've been seeing. But that being said, the two other companies that we interviewed have very little municipal experience in the IT world, whereas IT Right built their company around municipalities in the state of Michigan. Then to go with that, the little bit of municipal experience that the other companies do have, they do not have police department experience, which I will tell you, when I get audited for all the criminal justice information that we have, we maintain, we look up, have access to, that is a grueling audit process that I go through every three to four years. It's a tremendous headache. These companies, these other two companies have zero experience with that. I could call IT Right right now and by tomorrow morning I would have a packet of information that they have, that they know that I need to have for this audit and they can just ship it all to me in about a dozen or more attachments, providing certifications of all their employees and all of that. And I believe that these other companies that we interviewed could probably get to that point eventually. I don't know that I want to have them cut their teeth on us and learn all of that. They seem willing to, they didn't really back away from any of the questions that I had for them, but they didn't have all the answers except for I'd be willing to get the training behind that and learn that. And that concerned me a little bit because what I don't want to do is have to go through this audit and have them learning as we go. It's just going to be a larger headache for them and me, quite honestly. So that being said, we've recommended, we've talked it over and even though there's a price difference, we are looking to maintain our current services with IT Right slash VC3. We've been with IT Right when I believe they, in my mind, when I took over as chief, I believe they were probably like a four or five person outfit. They were bigger than that, but I just, I could call and I knew what I was going to get and I knew them by name, they knew me by name, they knew Devin and hey, yeah, I'll call you back and let you know what we come up with or they fix it right there on the phone. They got big and they got really big and then they realized they needed help and they transitioned to VC3. But they still have a few of those people and we got to sit down with one of them and kind of reconnect some ties and it was good to do that, but in the end, I feel more secure with an experienced company handling our information and the technology that we have. I don't know that we necessarily take a step back, but we definitely would not be moving forward as quick as IT Right slash VC3 is going to move forward.
Any questions on that? I can tell you that everything that I've noticed and have been unsatisfied with, we were pretty blunt and put it on the table with them.
Yeah, we were.
He walked away not knowing whether we would stay with them. We weren't rude, but we were just to the point and they were appreciative to hear, I mean, it was appreciative to hear it, but really simple things that we're used to hearing about at least in 24 to 48 hours that are not emergency are two to three weeks out. So we let them know all the things aren't happening. Much apologies and explanations of what is going forward and is already improving, so.
Is it improving?
Well?
Have you seen an improvement from when they?
This is what I can tell you. I can tell you that the contract that they're proposing to us, we could get out next month. It is that they have made it so you can get in and out. But I have to agree with Kyle on it that they've admitted, he admitted their faults right to our face and what's going on. We got a brutal what was, what is happening in there and I just can't believe that they won't turn it around. So I, I would stick behind Kyle's recommendation also for the police department only because we do have that out. And then I also, you know, Kyle and I talked, so, so what if, what if it was a big sales? And I got his input on who he thought might be able to support us on the other two and so, you know, we would break it back to council and then do that consideration. But, you know, it's all about the difference in experience and some of the programs we were asking, because Kyle knows his stuff and then I know a few of the stuff that I work with, you know, one of the questions we asked was do they do patch, you know, the patches all the time and they, both of the other companies did it, they do it manually or like I expressed, that's the difference is VC3 now, they've been, they've had it for us for two or three years, but they have a third party, so it's constantly while we're sleeping, whatever, there's a third party catching any holes going on and patching them all the time, which I appreciate, they knew it, they understood it, you know, they got hands on and, you know, they might have an alert that will come up.
You're referring to the other companies?
Mm-hmm. Yes, the other companies. It's not that they weren't aware, but there's a few other things that again, because they've grown, they also have, you know, two or three security levels going on to, and our biggest concern, I don't know who's been here, Mindy, you might have been here, we have been cyber attacked with ransomware. We were with IT Right, of course, we've never been anywhere else and I can tell you with their backup systems, it worked. We lost 24 hours of work and that's it. We didn't have to pay any, anything for the ransomware. Worst case was is our server was so old, they said it'd be easier if we just bought a new server and start all over. So we know they can protect us. Now at that time, they didn't have the 24/7 patches. We were one of the first of that, of IT Right that got hit. And we also, all three companies were expressing with cyber attacks and ransomware about all these different levels that the insurance company is going to ask you and if you don't have these in play, you know, you're not going to get it reimbursed. Well, I will let you know MML doesn't ask us those questions. We do have cyber insurance on it, but I also, that's one thing I'm comfortable with VC3 that it's going to, it's not going to slip through the cracks very long. I mean, nothing is impossible to get in, but that doesn't mean they won't stop it right away. And in this day and world, the biggest ones that are hit are government. All levels of government is what they're hitting and constantly hitting. I don't know which one, which of the reps said it, but they said, you know, there's no way you can stop it because they're getting paid millions of dollars just to sit at home and corrupt you and get paid for it. So all we can do is have two or three levels, because I think it was Randy that said that, but they just, they're, at this point, I believe VC3 is the safest.
Is there a significant cost increase or cost savings?
Well, this is.
Cost difference.
There's a cost difference.
Okay, well, I, I agree, I don't disagree with your comfortability with the company. That's not what I'm getting at, I just want, gotta know all the information, so.
Nope, that's fine, we went through that too. So we were at the 5,000 level, what about four years ago, I believe, and they decided that they were undercharging us. We were at 5,000 for almost 20 years and they brought us up to like 33%. And what we found out by talking with Randy is that they went from, I think it was $30 per desktop and they brought it to $50 per desktop of ours and that's how they gave us our annual. So as they got with VC3, VC3 says, you're undercharging, you, you should, you should be charging more.
And they charge per computer?
Per, yeah, per desktop. VC3, they charge their people 130 or their, it's 130 per desktop.
Per month, right?
No, what you do is you do 130, yeah, it was 130 times how many and then you have your annual. So now it's come to this contract and, and so when they were negotiating with VC3, they're like, we can't do that to our customers, we can't offer the 130, that's just too much. So now they've raised it to $80 per desktop. So they are. So they are more competitive. Again, I think these other two companies that we talked about, they're like the original IT people that we talked about and that are, although they're smart and can do the job, they still don't have the experience and so they could charge less. Does that make sense on that? But that's, we learned a lot of different things, but.
Private business is a lot different than municipal business. These guys don't have the experience in the municipal world, so I don't know that they know the price per computer, per, you know, for government versus, you know, an office, at least office space with X amount of computers in it. So I almost think we're talking two different worlds and I don't think they're shying away from the opportunity to learn it, they just haven't yet.
Yeah.
And they're in, I'm not going to deny it, they are in some municipalities, but they're not in anything close to what the city of Perry has.
Okay. And this is, it's an end that we can get out any time, there's just no fault clause or whatever. The contract simply locks their price in for us?
Or how long, one year or?
Three years at the current price and then after that, it'll be a rollover contract and it's either 4% or Consumer's Price Index, whichever is higher. So I will let you know that I've given the city attorney none of the agreements that they have proposed to us. So you'll notice in your motion that there will be no authorization in whatever you choose until the city attorney reviews their agreements.
I think you guys should send it to the attorney, but I think you should pursue the VC3 because of the things that you brought up, the police and the comfortability of the municipality, because I agree with Kyle that it's not the same as private business. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I left it in blanks because I didn't want to assume.
Is that the, is that the 13,440, the quote on this last page?
It is.
I move that we approve the IT proposal from VC3 for three years for an amount not to exceed $13,440 pending city attorney's review and approval and then authorize mayor to sign an attorney-approved contract.
Second.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
I just knew he would talk because he's like, you want me to talk?
Did we vote on it?
We're about to.
He's just going to stand there and wait.
Move by Mike, seconded by Bob, that we approve the IT proposal from VC3 IT Wright for three years for an amount not to exceed $13,440 pending city attorney's review and approval and then authorize mayor to sign attorney-approved agreement. Any questions on the motion? Just a little information, the IT Wright has been with the city for as long as I can remember, well before 2000.
You're out of bounds.
When we don't get what we want, we still know the president, so that's what we've been doing.
Because we know his godmother.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you all.
Possible approval of old report writing software.
It finds out your stains.
I'll be right back. Close the entrance. I do, absolutely. All right, so back in, was it November, you folks approved that I contract with a new report writing, report management system called SRMS. The old system is through Core Technologies and they have what I figured out to be 13 years' worth of data that we have housed on their location and on their servers and it is our data, we own it. They don't dispute that at all, but in order for us to read that, they have a special program for us to utilize that and it's a one-time deal. This isn't an annual, I'm not going to come back next year. And if something should happen, I'm going to end up with a thumb drive with our data on it regardless, but I'll do some redundancy and some backups. That being said, to do it right, do it correctly and make it the most user-friendly for the officers to retrieve last year's data or up to 13 years' worth of reports and information, this is the route that I feel is best to purchase from Core Technology and get the application and the one-time setup fee on a desktop that I've already purchased. It's a standalone unit, it's not going to be connected to the internet or Wi-Fi because once the program is installed on it, I can't have any updates that mix up with the software. So Windows might update, but I can't have it update if it offsets the readability in the program with Core Technologies software.
So you'll have a separate standalone zip drive or thumb drive or?
Yeah.
Cut card or once for backups, all that in case something happened?
Yep, yep.
I have just a question, any future reports will be there and on a thumb drive also that would be?
So the future reports are on the SRMS database, the new program that we went to and I've been told by their people that we'll always have access to that, whether we add more, which we are currently doing, or if it's just read-only, we wouldn't have access. So SRMS is a statewide system, so any department that is associated with SRMS, I can read their reports. So I can read the people, if they enter in some guy and I interact with them, I can pull them up from their database and put them into ours. It's very user-friendly as far as the cross-section information that we get and receive. I would not have access to that, but anything that Perry PD inputs, I would still have access to if we choose to go with another vendor in the future. So we shouldn't have to cross this road, even if we leave SRMS.
Let's wish to take your action. I move that we approve the purchase of TAMS database and one Talon, the Talon license for an amount not to exceed $1,500.
Second.
Move by Bob and seconded by Chad, that we approve the purchase of the TAMS database and one Talon license for an amount not to exceed $1,500. Any questions? All those in favor, motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I'm going to sit down. Any other business that may come before council?
Can you hear? Just one thing. I just wanted to make sure because I just can't remember, did everybody get a copy of the minutes from the local officer's compensation commission? Okay, so you are aware that they are recording, no change? Yes? Okay, so if Greg comes in, then they could go over it in more detail, but I just want to make sure that you are all aware and got it and I couldn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Any help in cabinet this time? Council discussion or observations? Attendents, for next meeting. I'd like to, I know we need to have the chairman of Sussa come in. I believe he's going to be joined by the fire chief to give a presentation for the polls of Sussa, new Sussa. And that will be a, not slideshow, the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint, thank you.
You need the projector?
Yes, well, I believe you will. The assurers, we need to have her ready.
Sure.
He asked me, Tim asked me when the next meeting was, I said, oh, Thursday, oh, two days, no, it won't be this gentleman's. All right, it is 8:03. Means adjourned.